It is four o'clock and the city council workshop is in order. Let me explain, a member of the public may address city council regarding an item on this agenda. Such comments must be relevant to the agenda item. This is not intended to be a question and answer session. Each speaker is limited to four minutes. Okay, is there anyone, a member of the public that would like to make a comment at this time? Okay, then let's go to item two A, Mr. Hoppe.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Pleased to bring forward to today a workshop item in regards to an update to pavement management system that we've been implementing, as you know, over a number of years and did a revamp over the 2019 timeframe. But then also, not on your agenda for the workshop, but later on for tonight, the 2020 slurry seal program and kind of how this fits into the bigger picture. And really, a good news story on some good bids that we got. And so how we're recalibrating based off those bids and how we want to make sure and deploy the full level of funding to maximize our maintenance program. Okay, so just a quick update on where we're at with the pavement management program. As you recall, in the early 2026 timeframe, the city really launched off on the first automated assessment of street conditions across the entirety of the roughly 300 lane miles that the city maintains across the community. That was completed and there was a maintenance program that was implemented for about four program years from 2016 through 2019. And overall, there's about 128 lane miles that were maintained in one form or fashion, whether that's crack seal, or slurry seal, reconstruction. In the early 2019 timeframe, the city completed a reassessment of that automated pavement system. And then, as you recall, over the summer, we came back to you guys with those initial pavement reconditioning evaluations. And then really kind of set forward where we're going to pivot and modify that strategy, which we have modified slightly. Subsequent to that, as you know, over the fall timeframe, we also got community survey results back. Had a very high level of resident support for capital funding for street pavement projects. And you all subsequently dedicated some capital dollars to that, approximately eight million, which we're in the process, Jess with Success Engineering is here. He's in the process of doing that design engineering work right now. And we're hoping to begin to issue those in the late spring timeframe so we can begin to bring contract awards for the reconstruction work back to you in the early summer, probably June timeframe. But what we really want to talk about today is not the reconstruction, but really more the maintenance side of things, slurry, crack seal, and the mill and overlay work that we do internally. And so that's really the early 2020 work that we'll be focusing on today. So with that, I would like to bring Public Works Director Stuart Barron up to talk about some of the key objectives in that reassessment of that plan.
Evening, mayor and council. I'll give you a brief recap of where we were at on our pavement management system, why we went back and hired Fugro and Success Engineering to reevaluate our streets. The first one is we wanted to, we always want the newest technology. We want to be able to tell people, hey, we're using what's available to us right now. Before, we used the Fugro van and an engineer, contract engineer to do it. We would go out with a tablet and a piece of paper and evaluate each street by hand, looking at the cracks and trying to determine how many cracks are in this street versus the next street. And you can imagine, by the time you're done with a few hundred miles of streets, your own mental ability to assess each one of them has diminished. So went back in and did that evaluation to really, to really dig down and find out, what is the worst streets in town? How are they failing? Why are they failing? And what can we do to fix that? So we polished up on that assessment, brought it, redid it in 2019. And then, as we also wanted to know, are the streets failing as fast as we're anticipating that they were failing? Is it, are the repairs holding up as well? What do we need to do? Do we need more asphalt? Do we need to do these other kinds of repair techs? So every time we do a, every time we do a drive over of the street, we're able to get more data and build a better street that's going to last long, but not overbuild it, not, these things, super expensive. Every street we do is super expensive. So we want to do the minimum amount of work we have to, to get the best quality of street we can get. So as we worked through that, we looked at other types of payment methods and techniques. We looked at chip, this most recent plan, we looked at doing some chip seal and see, is that something we wanted to use in the city? It is a very inexpensive way, yet fairly effective for sealing streets. We decided it's probably not the best entrance in the city. There's what typically happens and what we've noticed from Tech Todd and some of the other areas around that these, the chips are the stones that come up out of the, out of the asphalt. And when they come unstuck, they get stuck on people's cars and their dogs get oil on them and ladies' high heel shoes get oil on them. And so it's, it's, even though it's a, a more inexpensive way to do some repairs, it's not always the best way. We, yes ma'am, we felt it was good to-
Wasn't there something about the carbon gutters being treated? You-
Yeah, you lose your gutters on the end because you're, typically with slurry seal over, or excuse me, chip seal over the top of them. Because you get another thickness of rock over there, which is anywhere from a half to three quarters of an inch thick. And so your streets keep getting bigger and bigger. So we looked at that and decided, you know, we're going to stick with the, with the tried and true, the four methods that we've been using all along. We wanted to combine a couple of street segments. The original plan had us paving individual blocks. And we wanted to combine those into sections so we'd cover the whole street and did not, not running our contractor all over town and potentially saving money. I think you'll see later tonight that we were able to save some money and get some of the credit to that method. Life cycle evaluation, see how long the repairs are lasting. We talked about that a little bit already. Reevaluate the budget, see how, how much money we were going to be allocated in the next few years and use the best repair methods to get, get, to utilize those techniques. Prioritization of streets there, you see, and then, in the very, in the original plan, we, we had used what they call the PCI, which is the, how bad is the asphalt condition of the street? Is it cracked up? Is it there? Is it smooth? In this most recent plan, the 2019 plan, we used a three-prong approach to not only estimate how bad is the asphalt of the street, how much traffic does the street have on it? Are we fixing streets that are going to have a lot of traffic? Are we going to get the most citizen use out of these streets? And then we're also going to use a ride indicator, which this van was able to give us because they're driving through, it has a little gyroscope in there and tells you how bad the ride is. So we combined all three of those tech, all three of those options or techniques and compiled them all in, into a formula and let that give us the report. What's a street that has a low ride, bad pavement, and then also has a bunch of traffic? And that's where we decided we wanted to start. And so that, that report, we were able to do that with this report. And so we incorporated all that, now, now we know what we know. So with this report, we were actually starting that this year, this year. And you'll see this on the next slides. So we started with our original plan, we had a PCI of about 58 and that was our measuring tool, what we were using. Now we're up to about 69.1, but who's counting?
We are.
That's the way we're keeping score, at least that's how we've been keeping score.
Everyone is, actually.
Yeah, very, very true, everybody is. The two lower ones are, I guess we'll go to start from the top, the crack seal, slurry seal, mill and overlay. Those are what we really consider as ongoing maintenance projects that we can do. And the crack seal and slurry seal, we do out, have contractors come in and do them. And then the mill and overlay, we do that in-house. And the, and the full-depth reconstruction, we used to do in-house. But we think we can get a lot more bang for our buck if we concentrate on mill and overlay and contract out some of the full-depth reconstruction because they just have the equipment to do it and we don't have all that equipment. So the bond that you approved earlier this year was for the full-depth reconstruction and that's that eight point one one lane miles. And we'll be talking, we're not talking about that too much today because we, we'll be bringing that back to you in June and kind of working that forward from there. So we're going to talk a little bit more about crack seal, slurry seal, mill and overlay. You'll see at the very bottom of this slide down here, this is what the street department used to be doing in preparation for crack seal and slurry seal. We may be contracting out some of that work as well, the patchies that we do under the slurry seal and then also the crack seal. So how they've been doing, how our street's been doing? Are they getting any better? Are they getting any worse? And you can see on the, on the bar chart on the right, this is what it used to be in the PCI in 2015 and what our PCI is going to in 2019. You can see the green, excuse me, the green and the yellow are getting bigger cells and that's exactly what we want. We want to have a better, higher quality of road. The stuff down below is getting a little, is about the same, but that's what we're going to address with the bond. So those dot items there is what we're going to do, address with the bond again. We'll be bringing that back to you in the midsummer. The rideability, is the rideability getting any better? Another one of the tools that we're using to measure our, our success. And it is, it's gotten significantly better in the last four years. And so we feel like we're making progress.
What, what is rideability? I mean, is it how, how much you bump as you go along or?
That's exactly what it is. What does it feel like when you're driving down the road? Are you feeling a utility cut? Are you feeling a train track? Are you feeling a pothole? Or is it nice and smooth, like a new street? And so you get that and it, there's a, similar to your phone, if you, you know, sometimes you shake your phone to get it, get its attention to wake up. It has that same technology in the van. As it shakes more, it says, oh, that, there was a bumpy ride. And if it's riding really smooth, then it doesn't, then it doesn't shake at all.
That makes sense.
And I will turn it back over to Mr. Hoppe for some financial-
Stuart, let me ask you this. Two things. One, in regard to, we're going to, we're going to start on this plan in June. Okay, my understanding is we've got basically seven months to do roadwork?
Yes, sir.
Is there any way to move that up to where we can look at May instead of June of getting started?
We're, we're working with our, with our con, our engineering consultant right now. He's actually under design for that. They were going out, they're doing all the boring work right now for the, matter of fact, we've had him in town the last couple of weeks boring in the street, trying to get that squared away and get us out to bid as soon as we can. We hope to have it out to bid by May and then contracting by June. And that's really the, the best time of year, the warmest time of year to do the asphalt repair. The sooner the better. But yeah, we are, we're pushing as, as hard as we can to get it done as quick as we can.
Okay, one other thing, the chart on reconstruction down at the bottom. Are you going to contract some of that out?
Like reconstruction?
Reconstruction?
Yes, sir. All of the reconstruction this year will be contracted out.
Okay, okay.
That's the full-depth reconstruction where they come in and mill it out and then they mill out the subgrade, bring base back in, compact it, and then pave over it.
Okay.
And what, what our forces will be doing, what, what our street department will be focused on is just the mill and overlay. And the mill and overlay is when they, they mill out next to the, next to the gutters or the curbs on both sides for about two feet. And then they come, so they'll, so we can match the gutter line when we put the new asphalt in. And then they put a new layer of asphalt all the way from gutter to gutter. So we're not doing that base work is the main difference there. And we're not milling out all of the old street.
Yeah.
We're able to cover a lot more ground by doing that.
Right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a quick add-on to his, just, just because of the timing, I wondered about that too. So does it still look like completion by end of fiscal? Or is there going to be some carryover on that? Or is there any way now?
Well, I, I don't, there's not really any way. It depends on the contractor and how big it, how big he is and how many crews he's willing to bring to town.
And the weather, yeah.
And the weather.
So, but we're, we're making it as streamlined as possible for those. And we'll see, because they're again, one big street as long, as long and straight as we can do it for them to get them, get them in and get them out.
Thank you.
So let me clarify also, we've got, we're not waiting until June on the maintenance program. Crack seal, contractors already been let, and we'll talk about this in just a minute. Slurry seal is on your agenda tonight. Mill and overlay, our, our guys are raring to go. So they're going to be starting up, you know, probably first part of March if we can, if the weather allows us to. So you're going to start seeing street work ramping up. It's just those reconstruction elements that probably are not going to be actually hitting, you know, mobilization until that June timeframe.
Oh, that's good.
So we'll talk a little bit just about the historical maintenance budget. As you can see here, and this only goes back to 2007, you know, when you had really, you know, less than about 200, 250,000 that was budgeted on a regular basis for street maintenance. And so, you know, over a period of time, you just had the community over decades that was not investing in, in the street assets. And you've got literally hundreds of millions of dollars worth of an asset out there that was not being maintained to the level that it really needed to be. And so you had a lot of deferred maintenance that then unfortunately needed full reconstruction because there just wasn't, it's like maintenance on your car. When you don't do maintenance on your car, then you get a big breakdown, right? Fortunately, you all put in place a plan to go take care of kind of the big break items and then better dedicate resources and have been ramping that up over the last couple of years to a stronger maintenance program that now we've really been able to essentially dedicate all of this annual funding towards a more appropriate level of maintenance strategy and then really dedicating those CO dollars towards those reconstruction facets. So as you can see here, again, you know, this shows the condition of a road, you know, at a good level, you can go and kind of cycle back through. You crack seal, that extends the life, slurry seal, that extends the life, mill and overlay, and each step, it kind of kicks it back up a notch. But if you don't do these things, then unfortunately it gets to that reconstruction level and you've got to do catch-up. And again, that's kind of why I had to focus that, that big influx of the CO dollars. But again, this annual maintenance strategy is really dedicated towards continuing to keep that, a street well-maintained so it doesn't get to that point. As you may recall from the assessment that Success helped us with, this was kind of the pie chart, looking holistically across our roughly 300 lane miles of roadway. And, you know, each segment of different areas of roadway that needed different techniques. As you can see, the vast majority there is crack seal, you know, and going out there and doing that kind of more widespread and very cost-effective maintenance activity. And then quite a bit of mill and overlay work as well as slurry seal work. And then some of the subsequent budget estimates. And not all of this, again, happening in one year, but looking at it holistically over that 10-year maintenance cycle. So within the budget PCI scenario, again, this year, we laid out a scenario. You can see here in year one, you know, sans the reconstruction dollars, you looked at a budget of 1.75 million. And that was really broken up into crack seal, 200,000, slurry seal at 600,000, and then our mill and overlay work, which is really materials for our guys to go out there and implement, doesn't include their, their actual individual man-hour cost, but really material costs about 955,000.
On that slide before, there's a breakout on the total reconstruction. Are we paying some of that out of our general too? Is that why that little black separation in the yellow on the right one? Yeah, on the right.
No, that's factoring in professional services for the design for reconstruction.
That's not the road costs? That's just the design costs?
No, we really don't have road costs in most of those because we don't anticipate, these aren't new roads, it's just reconstruction of existing roads.
Reconstruction versus professionals, what you're saying?
Right, yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So again, you can see, and this is, you know, just part of this trend line that was part of the report, really focusing on the near-term, next three or four years. You know, there were different, there were different levels of assessment there. Basically, it was kind of a, you know, if we don't do anything, we don't dedicate any dollars to annual maintenance, you're going to see, you know, a precipitous decline in the PCI back down into the 50s where we were before. And that's really kind of a budget scenario that you saw back in previous decades. You know, another technique is to have, you know, a much higher maintenance level where you're budgeting for reconstruction, a very high level of reconstruction, several million dollars every year. And then trying to get up to that level, you know, and increase it that way. The, the strategy that the, the plan really indicated and that you all authorized for us this last year, well, it was really to look for an influx of dollars, no CO dollars, to go really take a hard hit at those, those streets that very desperately, those red and orange ones out the bottom that needed to be reconstructed. And then looking at a more appropriate annual maintenance level. And even with that, as you can see, this green level, it does begin to go back down. And so that's why we, we will continue to look at assessment techniques. As we've talked to you before, as we look into this upcoming budget process about, you know, enhancing the annual maintenance level to make sure we're calibrated there. And then also, I think what we found with these most recent bids is that we did find some of the efficiencies that we were looking for as far as mobilization costs, having a little bit bigger projects, having those projects be closer together. And so we got good bids and now we're able to accelerate the work and get more bang for our buck on the annual maintenance strategy. And so it's going to help us turn this curve and really pick that curve up. So it's not just maintenance, but we're, we're making some solid improvements.
When we get up to the 70% level, now we complete the current reconstruction needs. If we maintain that level, what happens to the, the full-depth reconstruction going forward?
Right, so we're attacking a high level of that reconstruction so you're not having to do those. And I'm not saying that there aren't a few of those that are more towards the bottom that aren't going to need reconstruction going forward. But certainly, what, what, it will not be to the level of significance that is out there right now.
By us maintaining, that's going to, that's going to prevent the, the amount of full-depth reconstruction we have to do in the long term.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So a lot of this is, like you said, kicking it down the road so far that it's just, the roads are completely-
Right, you stay on your scheduled maintenance technique and you're not having to go fix those big, big repairs.
So is this a new entry, having a budget for crack and seal, slurry, slurry seal? I mean, did they not have a budget for that before? And this is something we'll continue to do in the future to make sure?
Yeah, prior to 2016, very modest budget for crack seal, slurry seal, and mill and overlay.
But they had something, they just didn't have enough.
That's right, that's right. Yeah, it was not a robust enough program to really maintain the streets in the way that they needed to be maintained.
The budget back then was basically repairing cost. They wanted to stuff the repair cost. They didn't do any kind of real true maintenance.
Interesting, well, they're important too, but-
Can you go back a slide?
Sure.
So when you look at the, no, I'm sorry, go for, there you go. On the reconstruction number, the 7.8 is roughly the eight million of the COs. The other two million is for drainage. But we, we have not identified the source of the funding for years two through 10 yet. So this is a challenge for us in our budgeting process to figure out a new source of funding to begin, to continue to do some of that and continue to grow our street management budget so that we can stay ahead of the game.
We pulled out the reconstruction, we would, it wouldn't be an issue, is what you're saying? That if we were, if we pulled that out, we could maintain without any issue?
Eventually, you're still going to have to be more aggressive.
Because any street that has a certain life cycle, at some point in time, is going to be reconstructed.
Yeah.
We're just extending it.
Better be much better than what we have been doing.
The stormwater drainage plan also, though, will help because part of the reason we have the issues like on Hill Country Drive was because we couldn't avoid having flooded streets, which deteriorate your, your street. So, I mean, all those things were connected and that's, it's all going to help.
That's right, yeah. And so, you know, we've got a good plan now, we put a good plan together. And now, you know, this, the theme this year really is about deployment and working that plan and deploying those resources. We've talked to you a little bit already about those, but want to go into detail here. So as you can see, within that, the task on crack seal program, you guys have already let that contract with 4B paving. We solved significant efficiencies there. We budgeted at about 200,000 this year. We got a bid at 38,000. So really, really solid numbers there. We've worked with 4B in the past, really, really good vendor. So what we're recommending, we're able to authorize up to a 25% change order. That gets us approximately three, almost four additional lane miles roughly of crack seal work. Again, a very efficient maintenance method to get out there and really maintain, get, keep that water from intruding into our roadway. So that's what we would be recommending doing, accelerating, be able to complete all of that 2020 work for significant savings and start to go into some of the 2021 work.
That's a huge discrepancy. How did that, just by putting together the locations and the priorities and?
Exactly, and scheduling of timing, it just, yeah, we just got really great bids. Slurry seal, again, tonight is not on your agenda right now, but it will be later this evening. Inner Mountain, we did get a bid from them. We had budgeted that at 600,000. Got a great bid at 345,150. That's another one that we would recommend, a change order, which because of the threshold, we'd be bringing back to you for about an 86,000. That would push us from about 12 lane miles of work to being, completing 14 to 15 actual lane miles of work. And we would begin to actually start accomplishing and accelerating some of that work that was scheduled to not occur until 2021. So trying to bring that forward. In addition to that, what we would, as we kind of alluded to earlier, we'd like to take that difference because it was factored into the overall cost of getting that job done, that difference between those bids and really putting a bid together from the savings on crack seal and slurry seal and having private contractors go out there and do the base repair and the slurry preparation work that our crews would normally have to do. But if we're doing that over the month of March and April, we're going to get to less mill and overlay work. And so what often happens when we're doing that is we get to the end of the summer, we get too close to where we could do a little bit more paving out there and we basically have run out of time. And so we can really maximize those seven months, as you mentioned, mayor, of our internal paving season if we can contract out that base repair and slurry preparation work. And so we've already talked to Success Engineering. We feel like they can put a bid together here in the next seven to 10 days, get that out on the street, and hopefully we get good bids and can bring that back to you in, in the March timeframe. So again, that really helps us maximize mill and overlay, helps us contract out where we feel like there's efficiencies to contract out. And hopefully we'll get another good bid, just like we did with crack seal and slurry seal work. So that's generally our maintenance program overall. We've got a pretty aggressive strategy, I think. If you have any questions you may have.
What questions do you have?
I have one. And just out of curiosity, you, you know, we, we did one in 2016, the study. We updated in 2019. So is it a three-year cycle for wanting to go back and revisit that?
Yeah, that's what we would recommend, just to see, because it gives, again, it's a, you know, it's an ability to go out there and do a scientific assessment, right? And really just see, okay, where are you keeping up? Are you falling behind? Are you getting ahead? And we'll also know, we'll have more data on how our techniques are working. You know, hopefully what we would see is that the techniques that we're deploying are extending the lifespan and we're able to, you know, kind of tweak the plan, so to speak, right?
Yeah, right.
Would you mind going back to the last slide that you had up there? And I may be missing this, but let's just take the crack seal line. We budgeted 200, contracts at, call it 39,000. You say you've got a 25% allowance that you can come back and increase that. So that takes it to 50,000. It still leaves $150,000 in that budget. And I know you're talking about using that to help fill potholes. And is it going to take $150,000 to fill potholes and trim trees?
Yeah, we, we think that based off of the quantities of what we typically have, we will, the prep work for base repair work on that 15, roughly 15 lane miles, we do think that contract will probably be in that range between 250 and 350.
The prep work is more than the actual work?
It could be, yeah. It's, it's very labor-intensive. It's not, you know, it's not just kind of getting behind the truck and going. You're having to do spot sections where you're basically doing little mini reconstruction projects.
So think about River Hill right now. It's a candidate right now.
What was I talking about?
Command, you trace at it.
Well, but River Hill's a good example because it's, it's a candidate for the slurry seal. So we're, they're going to have to prep it for the slurry seal. But we all know that there's sections in there that have base failure. And then you have to go ahead and carve out like significant portions, put in new base, put in new asphalt, then patch it that way, very expensive. Then they'll come back over with the slurry seal, so it's a uniform look and a seal once they're done with all that base failure repair. So it's, it's not just patching a pothole, it's actually squaring it out and going beyond where it is. And there's a lot of that on River Hill. So that's just an example of why it's that costly because it's digging out entire sections, not just a hole here and a hole there.
Piece here, piece there, yeah.
But certainly, we hope we get good bids on the work and we're able to further deploy.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm tickled to death with the bids. I'm just trying to figure out the dis-
What to do with extra money?
Yeah, there's obviously some fairly significant amount of money that I want to make sure gets put back into the roads. And that's what you're telling me. So kind of the same thing on the slurry seal. We've got 150,000 or whatever that is, more than that, 250,000. And we think that prep work for that's going to be the same type of a deal?
I'm sorry, clarify your question?
Well, I mean, again, what are we spending the difference on, on the slurry seal project?
More, you get more miles out of it.
Yeah, so when we did the original estimate of the 600,000, it really, it really was an estimate on, you know, a combination of the repair work, the base repair work, as well as the actual slurry seal job that was going to be needed. So it's not totally implausible to think that it's about 200, 250,000 of base repair work in conjunction with that- in conjunction with that three forty-five to get to the total of six hundred. Where we really saw a surprise here was that on the, the crack seal was significantly less expensive than what we had originally estimated.
Maybe help if I, I, I gave y'all a, a little bit of a snapshot of what it looks like when we do a mill and, mill and overlay. Let me walk you through all, let me walk you through all the four of the different repair methods. The crack seal is, they come, you, you may have seen TexDOT do, they did it on Highway sixteen a couple of weeks ago. There's a, there's an air compressor, a guy walks down the street, blows the crack out, the next guy comes in, puts the seal in down, and then there's someone with a little mop behind it and pushing it in the crack. And they can do a lot of road like that. The full, the, the base repair of these, these five percent or two percent, what they do is they go in and they cut a square in the road, they pull that asphalt out of it and then they dig down into the base and they rule, typically on our roads, there are no bases, so they dig a hole in the road, they put base back in there and they put, um, some tack oil on top of that and then they repave that patch.
That's mill and overlay, what is that called?
It's a patch.
Just spot repair.
A point repair, a spatch repair, uh, what you're seeing here is called the two percent, uh, base repair.
Base repair.
And so that, that level of effort's a lot, and you don't get any lane miles for it, 'cause it's just a little short section of maybe a few feet, but it is very labor-intensive. And then after that's done, after that repair is done, then they would come back in and, and, and crack seal the road and then after that, we would slurry seal over the top of it to give that nice uniform.
That's typical of what our crews would have been doing.
Yes.
But now that you have surplus money, you're gonna contract that out. And in theory, that's kind of like our crews to do more lane miles of the-
Mill and overlay.
Mill and overlay.
Yes.
Yes, sir. I would, surplus money, I, I don't know if that's, but we're able, our crews are really effective, 'cause you're not getting very many, very much footage of that when we're out there doing all that, you just don't see it, because for one, it's under everything and, and you don't get any benefit of that. So we're trying to use, utilize our crews and keep them on, it's, it's spending, spending the money that's allocated them to cover as much as we can with that method.
And we've got the machine to do the mill and overlay, right?
Yes, sir.
And there isn't, when you, when you do that kind of work, it's all, every company would do it the same, at the same-
We, we spec out to them what we, how we want them to fix it. And so we tell them, okay, if you're gonna do a patch repair, you come in, you cut out a section of road and then you put this much base under it and then you put this much asphalt over it. So we tell them what we want and then they bid to us how much it would cost for their company to do that work. Very similar to the, to the, um, the slur, or the crack seal's a little different, because everybody's got a little different method, method of measuring, do they measure the crack, they measure the pounds of material that they put down, they measure the street or the width of it, that one's a little bit more challenging. But we do put a spec out there and say, this is how we're gonna measure and this is how we're gonna pay you and this is what you need to bid on.
Thank you.
And then we monitor obviously the quality of the work and inspect it, just like we do any other construction job.
Good answer, thank you.
I, I would say, you know, I'm walking the city, I've got about a hundred and ninety miles, uh, done. I could've saved the city a lot of money if I had just turned in evaluations of the streets I've walked.
You could've carried a mop and a, a stick.
Yeah, I could do it on the spot, on the spot, but, okay, one, one other comment. This, this might, well, this would be a wonderful project for kids in school to, to get into. I'm serious, because I mean, specifically, no streets, no that, but the math involved, the science involved, the graphs. Uh, so I'd say, hold on to this PowerPoint.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, well, again, no action required of you, uh, at the workshop meeting, it's just informational and kind of Q and A, but we do have the slurry seal contract, uh, on your regular schedule.
All right, thank you, thank you. Okay, it is four thirty-four and we are recessed to upstairs.